I would like to note that we have interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter for this evening is Mr. Bravo, if he can raise his hand. Mr. Bravo, would you let us know if there's any interpretation?
Antes de llamar a la junta a orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. El intérprete de esta tarde es el señor Bravo, está atrás, levantó su mano, si necesitan interpretación, por favor hablen con él, gracias.
I am now going to turn over the meeting to Mayor Alice Patino.
Yes, I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of June 6, 2023. Madam Kirk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad, then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. I would also like to announce that Madam Mayor Patino has requested to participate via Zoom this evening pursuant to AB 2449, which is the new Brown Act participation rules. Mayor Patino must, one, participate with both audio and visual technology, two, provide a brief statement for her just cause participation, and three, announce if there are any persons 18 years or older present in the room with her, and if any, her relationship to those individuals. Additionally, Mayor Patino may only utilize the just cause participation rule not to exceed one more time during the calendar year, as only two times are allowed. And finally, all votes must be taken by roll call vote. Before I call the roll, Mayor Patino, would you first provide your just cause statement for the need to participate remotely, and second, announce if there is anyone 18 years or older with you and their relationship to you? As a reminder, when you are not speaking, please remember to mute your mic. Go ahead, madam.
Okay, and may I ask you, have we done the pledge of allegiance and pledge yet?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have.
Okay, thank you.
We have also announced the interpreter as well.
Yes, I heard that part. I'm participating remotely due to a caregiving need in the family. There are no persons in the room with me 18 or older, and that's it, right?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and call the roll now. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. The first time on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Kirk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise printed on the agenda this evening. Excuse me, this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom. Madam Mayor, council members, before I begin, we did receive one written communication regarding a consent calendar item, 6B1, and that is regarding the airport, the airport, excuse me?
Land use.
Yes, the, yes, the land use element or compatibility plan. And that communication was written by Susan Bryant. She wrote expressing concern about her neighborhood and the city's proposed housing directly under two of the approach paths at the airport, citing safety and noise issues and continued cargo flights and military jet pilot training. And Madam Mayor, we have no attendees in Zoom as guests, and I have not received any requests to speak from the chambers.
Okay, thank you. So that obviously concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments you wish to make?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, moving on, the next item is the consent calendar. Madam Kirk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. Consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have none.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have just a question for 6E1.
I'll read that here.
Yes, please.
6C1 is the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments 2023 Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
No, no, the agreement with the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution for the grant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Grant agreement with Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District for the 2022 Clean Air Grants Infrastructure Program, 6E1. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fred, just wanted clarification, what this grant, what is it focused for? What's the, what's the goal?
The goal of the grant?
Yeah.
Well, this particular grant will grow to support the EV transition that we're undergoing as a city, and so it'll be, it'll support the infrastructure that we need to charge the vehicles that we have that are electric vehicles.
Because we're, we're shooting to go full electric by sometime?
Yeah, there's different, there's a whole bunch of different mandates that are out there and being discussed by both CARB and the state legislature. We know that it's coming, we know that it's something that's happening. There's a lot of support right now from the grant, from grant sources, and so we see this as an opportune time to take advantage of that funding.
And the goal, sorry, to go electric, all the fleet, the buses, to go electric is, what year are we shooting for?
So 2024 is the year that we're shooting for to go 100% electric with the bus fleet?
And we will be the second, the second city in California?
In the nation, yes.
Yeah, actually, we just, I was, I was just want to make sure that everybody knows that. I, that was my, I just want to show off for everybody who's here in the chamber, who's watching us, and I'm really, I'm really proud of, I'm really happy of you guys, all the hard work you've been putting, so, yeah.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or any things they wish to pull for discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. And having heard the motion and second, any further discussion? There is none, Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next item is the presentation, Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation on an update to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA projects and the actions being taken by the city to advance projects consistent with City Council ARPA strategic priorities.
The presentation is to be given by Assistant City Manager Andrew Hackelman. Good evening, Mr. Hackelman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So here we are back this afternoon to provide you with an update, and we do have, it has been a while, it's been since January, believe it or not, of 2022, since we've, we've discussed this. And what I'm going to do for you this afternoon is provide you the background by way of just a reminder and maybe just new information as well, and our current status for the ARPA projects and how the council has allocated funding according to the strategic objectives that the council directed staff to observe when priorities were made. So, just as a reminder, the United States Congress took action to provide financial assistance to local jurisdictions across the nation, and it was to help mitigate revenue losses and other costs associated with COVID, right? And this was a $350 billion funding package. Ultimately, this legislation resulted in $37.2 million coming to the city of Santa Maria. And of course, every other city and counties received funding from the federal government from this, this ARPA bill as well. And, and the way in which this money is, or was supposed to be spent, was to mitigate for impacts caused by COVID. The rules at the beginning were very vague, and the, the city engaged a consultant to help us navigate those rules because complying with all of the requirements is important so that for later audits, the, the city would be certain that, that the way that the funds were spent were allowable. And, and so we did that. And as, as rules became final from the US Treasury, we made sure that, that every I was dotted and T was crossed. So that's just some kind of preamble to the discussion that, that we're going to have today. And so there's also a timeline for spending these funds, and so there's, there's a couple of different dates, but it goes all the way out until 2026. And the, the city staff, with the guidance and direction from council, has committed these, these funds to projects that, that are underway, in some cases, complete, and in other cases, we have confidence that the projects will be delivered on time and within the timeline required by the rules in this legislation. So, and this, on December 31st, I'm sorry, so, I'm sorry about that, so, the council provided direction to staff for how these funds were supposed to be spent, consistent with the requirements of, of ARPA, the ARPA legislation. And the council directed staff to apply three criteria or three strategies when it comes to using these funds for identifying projects. And so the staff did that, and just as a reminder, these three strategic goals or priorities were, one, to reimburse costs incurred and revenue lost as a result of COVID-19, two, to invest these one-time funds in projects that can be completed in the required timeline and increase ongoing revenues or reduce ongoing costs. And then, three, strengthen the city's financial position to prepare for future, future fiscal emergencies. And I'm, I'm happy to report that, that we were able to do all three of those things by using these funds. So the staff conducted a robust process to identify and develop projects. The projects are attached in, in your agenda, and it's, it's a spreadsheet, and it's, it's long, but not too long. There, there are a good number of projects on there that I'm going to touch on in a minute. But I wanted to also bring up that the council provided directions subsequent to the identification of many of these projects, there, there was additional funding left over, and all of these things, these developments and the rules that the Treasury put forth, the final rules that, that were finally delivered, and it took many, many months to get there, but we finally did. And the city had some funds that were not committed, and the Treasury said that, that jurisdictions can set aside up to $10 million to put into the general fund to deal with any type of impacts to revenues and cover costs that were incurred as a result of COVID. And so the council directed staff to do this, and that, and that's what we did. And that had very minimal impact to projects. It was, it was fairly negligible, and in fact, those projects that were impacted, we were able to, by happy coincidence, it was during the last two-year budget, and so we were able to incorporate those high priority projects into the CMEPs that, that the council approved for that, that two-year budget cycle, which, which were ending the first year of, here on the 30th of, of June. All right, so, what we have now, so that, that would have fallen under, you know, number one, so reimbursing costs incurred and revenue lost as a result of COVID-19, that $10 million. And that's been an important bridge also, just as kind of a point of fact here in our discussion, in being able to achieve the balancing of, of our budget for this midterm budget update that you'll be seeing here shortly, that, that will come before the council at the end of June. Now, we have a number of projects here on this spreadsheet that the council has seen before and approved that meet the criteria under the second strategic goal, which is to invest one, these one-time funds in projects that can be completed in the required timeline. And so these projects span a range of different types of efforts. Broadly speaking, the ARPA funds could be used for water and sewer-related projects, for certain types of, of road and paving projects, although there were some limitations there, broadband, public safety. So there, there are a range of things, but there were nuances within each of those categories that had to be carefully observed to make sure that each of the projects was allowable, and that we were able to generate the required documentation to file with, how we expend these funds so that in the future, if the city's audited, we're, we, we know that, that those funds were spent according to the US Treasury rules. And so all of these projects here that you see are, are underway, or they're, or we've intended them to begin at a certain point. And all but, if you look at the last page of the spreadsheet, all but $1.782 million have, have been committed. And with the exception of a few projects which are intentionally not expended at this point, we do have the remaining budget on certain things like, for example, surface seal and heavy rehabilitation of park and recreation, recreation center parking lots. We have a number of rec and parks, parking lots that are in great need of, of attention, and so the council saw fit to approve that project, and it was $900,000. I'm just pointing this one out as an example. None of that money has been obligated yet, but we, we have a plan in place to do that, and it's part of our larger Public Works effort at paving efforts that we're doing within the city. Mr. Felgony has a, a plan in place to, you know, make this part of a much larger effort that we're doing with many millions of dollars that the council's invested in making sure that our roadways are, are maintained in such a way that we keep our PCI as high as possible. And there are one or two other projects that are similar to that, but largely speaking, our projects have our funds obligated, and we're down to that $1.782 million. Now, we worked as a team, all the department directors and myself, and Mary Harvey, Ms. Harvey from Finance, has, you know, worked closely with me on how to ensure that as these projects move forward, and I know all of you are aware that with inflation, costs have been increasing, and even before we were aware of kind of these runaway inflation examples that we've seen in the news and, and experienced in our personal lives, that we knew that projects often have some overruns in some cases for, for, for good reasons, even, even if we've done our best to try to pin down estimates. And so we wanted to have some reserve to be able to cover cost increases as the projects proceed over the next couple of years. And so that's why that $1.7 million was intentionally held aside to be able to cover for that, so that we wouldn't have to go into the general fund. But we find ourselves also right now with trying to meet other council priorities, so of the four priorities that the council has for staff, one of those is creating more recreation opportunities for families. And one of the best ways that the city does that is providing park and open spaces, and pocket parks are a great way to do that in smaller areas of our communities that are walkable and accessible by residents. And there are a handful of pocket parks in, in the midterm that we're looking at the potential for moving some of these ARPA funds, approximately $800,000, to measure you to, to cover this council priority. That's not a decision for today, but it's to let you know that, that there's a potential that we would want to ask council to take a little bit of risk with some of the projects that you've already approved for ARPA, and to be able to, in our mid-year budget update, our mid-cycle budget, to ensure that we're able to provide for those other priorities that the council has for creating more recreation opportunities for families. And so that would potentially go to measure you. But again, that's, that's a decision for later this month, and these funds, this ARPA funding is not connected to the budget, so this is not approved in the budget. This is a separate appropriation that the council has done, and it's, it's not in the two-year, it's not in the mid-cycle, it's, it's a separate appropriation, it's a separate pot of money. And so just, that's something to consider and, and remember as well that we've discussed before. So with that presentation, I'm here, as, as is Ms. Harvey and the city manager, Mr. Stillwell, and other department directors to address any questions that you might have, and we appreciate your time and opportunity to provide this update on, on ARPA and how we've been making progress on these projects for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackelman. Ms. Aguilar Hernandez, can you, if anyone has any comments or questions, can you give direction at this point?
Yes. Councilmember Cordero, raise his hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem. With all of the activity going on in, at the federal level, I asked this question earlier, and I know the answer already, but I'm wondering if other people that might be listening could have the same question. And there was some talk about trying to do some things with the funding at the federal level, and one of the options was to reach out and, and recall the money that had not yet been spent with, so that they could help to balance their budget at the federal level. And my understanding is, and maybe you can expand on it a little bit, is that that money that we have, that you're speaking about, is not threatened by recall by the federal government, at this point in time anyways, as far as we know. Is that, can you just elaborate on that so that people aren't thinking about, oh my God, here, we've got this money, now we're going to, we have it, we've committed it, and now we're not going to have it, so?
Yes, Councilmember Cordero, yes, you're, in short, you're correct, and the slightly longer answer just to, for the edification of, of the council and the mayor, there was discussion by Congress about quote unquote clawing back ARPA funds, and it was part of the, a larger debt ceiling discussion that the Congress was having. And in fact, the mayor and the council did discuss this and express some concern about the potential for a clawback. And there was real discussion happening about this, but there was since an agreement made by Congress about the debt ceiling, and now we know with certainty from our federal advocate and from the consultant that the city engaged to advise us on the use of the ARPA funds, that that is no longer a concern. Both state and local governments are, are no longer subject to any clawback of ARPA funds, and that's a, a final decision. So not, not only are we safe from any funds that would, that aren't currently obligated, and that would have been that $1.7 million that I mentioned to you, but none of, none of the funds at all will be touched at any state or local jurisdiction based on the resolution that the Congress was able to come to on the debt ceiling.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Madam Protem. Question, well, first, I do express excitement about the dejoint pocket park as well as the neighbor surrounded by it. And question regards the sports lining, three projects. Where are those three projects are going to be taking place?
Okay, that's, that's a great question, and I'm going to ask Mr. Passata.
Mr. Felgony.
I'm sorry, your question was when or where?
Yeah, what three, where are going to be those three projects at?
So the Adam Basin, which is near Manami, Crossroads Basin, which is College, and right there next to the county building. I think we were only able to fund two of those. Yeah. There were some cost overruns with, for what we've all been talking about the last year with inflation, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Crossroads?
Yeah, Adam Basin and Crossroads. Oakley was originally slated to be included in that, but we weren't able to fund that.
Any, any other questions?
That was, Oakley was going to be the third one, and what, why, why not, that would be? How did that come up?
When, I'm sorry, when what?
Why Oakley Park was not, what's, why not was included in those? What's in terms of the?
Mr. Passata.
Good evening, council. Councilmember Cordero, I'm sorry, Councilmember Escobedo, the, the reason Oakley wasn't selected was that the demand for use were, were at the other two facilities. Those are our major use facilities, and the goal was to be able to, if we were able to get those lit, that would add about 30% capacity to our field use. So that's why those two fields were selected over Oakley.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a?
Councilmember Soto?
Thank you, I have a clarifying question, Assistant City Manager. You mentioned that we have till 2026 to expand them, but on the report, it says December 31st, 2024.
So there's, there's some distinctions that are made in certain types of projects, and I think Ms. Harvey has the full details on how, how we have to have those funds obligated and, and then ultimately spent.
Councilmember Soto, the funds have to be obligated by 2024, so we'll have to have, you know, contracts in place and those kinds of things in place. They have to be fully expended by December of 2026.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. And moving on to the report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We have one request to speak here in chambers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Lori Tamora, and I work for Development and Urban Planning Concepts. And I want to acknowledge the work that the city staff has done in regards to some of the infrastructure improvements that are on this list. But if there is any extra money that needs to be considered or allocated, the Newton Street project, which is currently under construction right now, is only half of the solution for that area. The other half extends the sewer line, which needs to be upgraded to Western, I believe, and Deepo. That area over there where the old potato factory is, that property has been considered for probably the last eight years by organizations like People Self-Help Housing, Housing, Community Housing Authority, a number of different nonprofit organizations that would love to do and infill a high-density project there. But the improvement cost for the sewer line is detrimental to any possibility of moving forward. It would be another $600,000 to finish that section. And so, I hope that either through these funds that are still need to be allocated or other resources, the city would consider finishing that sewer line to that location, knowing that there will be reimbursement money coming back for their AB1600 fees and repayment of certain sections, but it's kind of the catch-22 of what comes first. And right now, it just sits there. So, I hope that staff would consider, or the city council consider during their budget cycle and during the review, that additional funds could be allocated to finish that project. And Brett and I've had many conversations about it, so we would love to see that move forward. Secondly, you know, the work that the city has done for the downtown specific plan area and others, we really appreciate those collaborations and seeing money allocated to that. My only comment would be, and Mr. Hackelman mentioned it, most of this work was done by staff for the allocations, and something of this magnitude, that's not a budget item, but outside of it, I think it would have been, I don't know, productive or just to get input from community members, whether it's the chamber or nonprofits or whatever, just to see if there was anything out there that staff wasn't aware of that could have been considered in this process. You know, it's a windfall during a very difficult time, and I think staff's done well on it, but I'd just make that suggestion that when something like this happens again, it might be good to have more input from the community. So, consider the Newton Project expansion and congratulations on good work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the City Manager if there is time to get public input for the allocations the remainder.
Yeah, there is time. The, as Mr. Hackelman mentioned, the additional money is allocated for contingency of the existing projects, given the price hikes we're seeing and the CPI increases. So, we could look at some maybe that you don't want to do in exchange for some, I mean, you could work to reprioritize them, and we could bring that back to you, or you can, yeah, that's probably the easiest way to do it, bring it back as an actual agenda item to work through those particulars.
I'm particularly interested in the $600,000 amount that Ms. Tamora brought up in terms of the sewer where the old potato factory is, because I know that is really expensive, but there is need for additional housing. And so, that's where my focus would be, if staff can raise that or respond to that.
Councilmember Cordero.
Thank you. Lori, do you have any idea of an approximation of how many units, residential units you're talking about in that area? And I thought that area was at one point being considered for mixed use and putting businesses on the lower level and then residents on the top, but I don't know where it is right now. So, how many homes could we be looking at there? And then the answer to that question?
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilman. The project that you're referring to is the Deepo Street project that did have a commercial, a small commercial center, some offices, and then 11 apartment units on a third level. And there is also a little bit of industrially zoned area north of the railroad tracks. The proposals that I've seen from People Self-Help Housing and some of the other organizations was about 125 units. Depending on, again, on the design, the size, all of that, they would have to go through a general plan change and rezone to be consistent with city ordinance, but, you know, it gets down to the bottom line, and some of the infrastructure improvements were deferring or delaying that possibility. I know there's a lot of needs out there, but with the city's success in moving forward with a portion of the project, it would make sense to finish it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll kick it back to the mayor.
Thank you very much. So, we move on now to report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So, the next meeting of the city council is June 20th. And a couple items of note. One is we will propose cancellation of the July 4th city council meeting. The next, the first meeting in July happens to fall on the 4th, and we don't anticipate you would want to be in this chambers. And then, most of the remaining part of the meeting will be focusing on the mid-cycle budget, and there's a number of items aligning with that. First, we had this presentation tonight to bring forward to you where we are on the ARPA grant projects. And then, we'll have a presentation on the pavement management at the next meeting of where we are with our road maintenance. And then, we'll have a regular business item for the mid-cycle budget, where you'll be able to update the second year of the two-year budget. We do have some recommended changes and amendments to the second-year budget. That'll also include a presentation of the city's Smart City Safe City Initiative. I know it's been a vision of the city council to work to make the city smarter and safer with a number of these projects, and we have a presentation how we are articulating that or proposing to. And then, we also have a presentation on what we're calling the Neighborhood Connect Presentation. It's a pilot program we did to reach out to our community and to improve ways for them to make service requests, and we're proud of the pilot project and want to present it to the council and see if it's something you want us to roll out citywide. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go on to the oral reports of council members. Mr. Cordero, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You might want to buckle up, I was kind of busy. I attended the Santa Maria Police Memorial Ceremony, and I have to say that I, my wife and I discussed this, and I think I've attended them all since we started them here in front of the, in front of the city hall here many years ago. And the team that the chief has put together out at the police department is just fantastic. It was a great program. I also was interviewed by a man by the name of Dan Payne that's working on the Santa Maria Valley Performing Arts Considerations, and that's likely several years away, but we did have some good dialogue and talked about some thoughts that we might have in it. I was, for a brief period of time, I couldn't stay for very long, I attended the Santa Maria Fire Department Golf Tournament out at the golf course. And then, I attended a meeting for CCWA, the water meeting out in Buellton. That is, I can't tell you how sophisticated and complex, yet how well-run that is, and I attend that, and the attendance there is with Mr. Springer. For the Memorial Day, I attended the ceremony at the Santa Maria Cemetery for, to honor our veterans and listened to a speech by the, by a staff member from the Vandenberg Air Force Base. And then, later that same day, I attended a ceremony out at the Elks Event Center for also honoring the veterans in our community nationally and internationally. I also attended a REACH meeting out at the, I'm gonna get this wrong, but Preskill Winery? Did I say it right? Okay. Preskill Winery. I hadn't been to a meeting with them in quite a while, and I will say that when they first started, they met here, and I think they were called the Klein Bottle or the Klein Hourglass, whatever. And I was wondering where we would end up with them, and I just have to share with you that that's an up-and-coming organization, they do a great deal of work. It was very impressive out there, and I was happy to be there. I met and talked with several people out there, exchanging ideas and things that are going on in the city. I also attended a broadband digital service here at the Vets Hall. We had other personnel from the city, Jeff was there, and it was informative. There were some things that I wasn't sure were totally necessary, but it's nice to know where we stand in the pecking order with regard to broadband or internet service for our constituents. And I think we're doing reasonably well. I attended a meeting for the Electric Leaders Forum on the homeless issues. It was a Zoom meeting. That was very well done by a gentleman by the name of Graham out of the state. And I was impressed with his delivery and ideas and rewarding communities for doing a good job and not punishing them for doing a good job by saying, well, you did a good job, so we're gonna take this money away because you don't need it anymore. They're taking a different approach on it. And then, on the 3rd, I rode in the Santa Maria Elks Parade for their 80th year of celebration for the Elks Rodeo. And I want to issue a thanks to the many people that I received letters from regarding the bike paths that are going into the community, some very well-written, very considerate letters that were written to, I assume many of you got the same letters, if not all of you. And people are very appreciative of the city's efforts to enhance the biking community. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 17, I attended the Santa Maria Police Department Memorial Ceremony. On the 24th, I attended one of the events with the Public Works Celebration. On the 25th, I was a guest speaker at the Civic Engagement Presentation with the Parent Institute for Qualitative Education. On May 31st, I attended meet and greet with the Elks Rodeo event. On June 5th, first, I attend the Por Vida Awards, put together by the One Community Action. And on June 3rd, I also participated, and I was really happy to see all the family coming together at the annual Elks Rodeo Parade. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
I did the Ben Hay Show. I attended the Santa Maria Police Department Memorial Ceremony. I attended the SB CAG meeting on the 19th. I attended the West Coast Customs Dinner and Cruise Night, where I got to meet Eric Estrada, the actor from Chips. He was sitting at our table. We took a picture, and he autographed some stuff, which is really cool. But most importantly, it was really nice to have the community come out and really look at the cars, what the mayor calls art on wheels, and how much pride people take in their cars and how much money they spend keeping and maintaining those cars. So, that was really nice. On 5/31, I went to the REACH Annual Appreciation Event at Preskill Winery, and I also was in the Elks Parade. And then, the, yesterday, we had a meeting with the Bradley Square Residence, which was a very productive and positive meeting. And that's it.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Public Works, where I did a meet and greet of the team and visited their sites. That's all for me.
Thank you. Let me see. Okay. I missed the memorial, our police officers' memorial. On the Wednesday, the 17th, I took myself and our Parks Commissioner, Ms. Carey, and Mr. David Rodriguez, we took 25 kids on our museum and excursions, and we went to SC, Caltech, UC Riverside. We attended the Museum of Tolerance, and in Riverside, we went to see Monte Cheech Marine's Art Museum. And then, I attended the Custom Car Show, and every year, they ask me to judge a car and to have the mayor's choice. I do that every year, we give that out. Attended a meeting with PixSuite and several businesses on West Benaravia and Blosser Road concerning all the vandalism and the burglary that have been going on in these businesses. And there was a cleanup done behind PixSuite along the railroads last week. I attended, well, I'm looking at this, and I'm working off of my calendar here, I don't see anything else that I've done, but thank you very much, and thank you for indulging me on this. It was very important to me, and I appreciate each one of you sitting at the dais tonight. So, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Claudia.